This is February the twenty-seventh in the year two thousand twenty-three, in the year of our Lord. We'll call our meeting to order this evening, and we begin by prayer, and then the pledge of allegiance. Father, we bow before you this day, on this Monday, the twenty-seventh day of February two thousand twenty-three. Father, we'll never see it again. We thank you for it. We thank you for life today. Father, for having the help. Father, we just bow before you, and you are the one who spoke the worlds into existence, who breathed forth the stars of heaven. We bow before you. We pray for your wisdom. We pray for discernment. We pray for the right answers of all that we do here, for the citizens of Scottsburg, Father. Thank you for allowing us to serve the people. Bless us this evening. In due time, we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. The next thing we have, roll call from our clerk treasor, Jan Hart.
Mayor Amy?
Here.
Chris Alpersen?
Here.
Bill Hovland?
Here.
Rick Panns?
Here.
Christian Evans?
Here.
Chuck Rose?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. The next thing we have is the approval of amendments from February two thousand twenty-three to February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We have a motion to accept the amendments. Chris.
Make a motion, Chuck Rose.
Christian Evans makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Chuck Rose, seconds. Now, questions, comments about any? Hearing none, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much. The next thing we have is our public comment period. The Scottsburg City Council will accept public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council, we ask to come forward and state their name for the record. Each person will have five minutes to voice their opinion. Your remarks should focus on issues and not be used to target city employees or elected officials. Is there anyone this evening who'd like to come forward? Hearing none, most of the public comment period going on down to the new business. This evening, we have the second reading of ordinance twenty-two-three-five, an ordinance adopting a purchasing policy for the city of Scottsburg.
You've made a motion to second reading.
Yeah.
I've had a chance to look at it. I don't have any additional concerns or questions. I make the motion to approve and second reading.
I'm over, but you know, either I didn't reach out, so I think it's going in the right direction.
Okay, so, can I thank you by any clarification of this? Okay. Hearing none, Chuck Rose makes a motion to go forward. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Christian Evans, seconds. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Uh, that was second reading. The one down to... The next one, do you want to go any further with this?
Is there any bigger question for this?
We just... No, we do have our animals sheltered. They're wanting to purchase a truck at some point, and then I know Josh said, then we have to take this to Board of Works. Is that correct? Once approved?
Board of Works would be the one administering for the purchasing agents, or the one purchasing agents, so, and they don't have to approve it to be effective.
I don't have a problem making a motion. We suspend rules at third reading by time limit.
Chuck Rose, Rose makes a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Chris Alpersen, seconds. Questions, comments? Hearing none, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much. The next thing is then to...
I think I'll make a motion to approve on third and final reading.
That's what I was wanting. So, motion to approve on third and final reading. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Bill Hovland, second. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all papers say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance twenty-two-three-five passes on all the last two readings. The next thing is, is first reading of ordinance twenty-two-three-seven, ordinance of the city of Scottsburg adopting job descriptions. We'll talk about that.
That's not me. I did.
That's on the...
It's on the... I got the schedule.
Uh, they were all in the drives. It was such a large... We've been working on this for about two and a half years. They all went through Lori, uh, which was Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy. They were all passed out in the past two years to all the department heads and changed and marked off and corrected and sent back. And they've all been approved by all the department heads. All the employees have seen them. They went back and forth several times, and we finally have them approved. They matched the salary ordinance. Uh, they've been double-checked, triple-checked with clerk treasurer's office. And Josh has, uh, looked at this ordinance to prepare so that we can get them approved.
So, Jill said they were in the drives?
Yeah, they're in your shared drive, so that you can...
And then you see, so the ordinance without...
Yeah.
...success.
What questions do which you have? I guess we might as well pass this the first reading tonight.
I think I would. I'd like a chance to look more or less. There's a huge rush. Is there?
There's enough.
There's a lot of me, and I'd like an opportunity to look more.
I'm just...
I have no problem taking the first reading. What about... Do the first reading? Would like a little more time to...
First reading, I think we can go ahead and take it, and like us. Then, let's go ahead and, and see if we have a motion to adopt on first reading only, ordinance twenty-two-three-seven. Uh, is there a motion to go forward with this on first reading?
I'll make that motion.
Christian Evans makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Chuck Rose, seconds. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Before I leave, would you show me how to access it? I'm trying to, uh, I'm the computer.
Yeah, I'm ready to get it, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I would say kudos to the mayor's office on this, Chuck, and on council. They were tired to finally have job descriptions that match our salary ordinance.
Chief Ritchie has... You okay with all this? Chief Ellis, you both okay with all this? There you go. I know you're gonna have some info here in a bit. Uh, our next is first reading ordinance twenty-two-three-eight, ordinance of the city of Scottsburg, and then a minute, ordinance twenty-seventeen-eight, concerning amendments to the economic development rider policy of the city's municipal electric utility. Now... Jill, you wanna explain this one? This is on that, uh...
The rider policy?
Yeah.
That's Willie. Um, Josh, you're gonna have to...
I was gonna say, I could probably about as... Know about as much as from equal footing here. So, this request came from Willie. Um, EMPA has changed, which is who we purchase our power suppliers, so they have changed how they require economic development rider, what amount of, uh, maximum amount of savings, uh, maximum amount of power, et cetera. So, we are adopting, uh, amending our policy to match EMPA's requirements.
And I will say this. This is... I've been up there. I've been going every month now. And with the... All together different than water. And there's a lot of different ways they do things. And it's confusing, but if you're going up, you're getting certain things. So, uh, they've got multiple things going on right now. I'm gonna talk about them and just... We've been having the announcements part. It's something that we learned this past meeting, so... So, this is reading of ordinance twenty-two-three-eight. So, if you want, listen, maybe we want to do the same thing again, since the last one was passing first reading on it.
I think this one might be time sensitive.
This one is time sensitive.
It looks like it's pretty straightforward. Um, Tom, read it correctly.
Yeah, it's my understanding that what we're doing is capping the overall savings, and basically lowering it. They used to be able to use more power and save, essentially.
Right. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Christian Evans makes a motion to approve, ordinance twenty-two-three-eight. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Chris Alpersen, seconds. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, unanimous. Thank you very much. See, it is time sensitive.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules. Half-second, third reading by time limit.
Christian Evans makes a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that also.
Chris Alpersen, seconds. Any questions? Hearing none, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes on the, uh, suspend the rules. Now, we'll accept the motion to go forward and pass ordinance twenty-two-three-eight on second and third readings. I'll make a motion. Bill Hovland makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Christian Evans, seconds. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance twenty-two-three-eight passes on all three readings tonight. The next thing we have is, uh, first reading of ordinance twenty-two-three-nine, ordinance amending the twenty-two-three salary ordinance of the city of Scottsburg, Indiana. Jill, you wanna talk on this one?
Chief Ritchie would like to speak on that one.
This is Chief Ritchie's.
Do you wanna fill their page? That's...
Okay, for the salary ordinance, just again, and then I'll let Jan show me to explain it.
Yeah, that's fine. Go ahead.
The salary ordinance, and then we'll let Jan's update council, uh, because I know he graciously appreciates that you, um, funded him to fill his department with one more full-time, uh, paid firefighter, um, after dealing with him for a week now. I'm not so sure. I graciously appreciate it, but we are closer. So, uh, we have come to... The reason this has been a little more difficult than one, because it's the first time the city has, has done this. So, we have worked closely with Irwin Shealy, um, and associates, Lori is our contact person there. So, when you hear us mention Lori, that's who has directed us on how, how we should do this going forward, because there will be two firefighters that will be working, uh, twenty-four-hour shifts. So, that is what this weekly salary of the first-class firefighter under number two on the salary amendment is that is for all hours up to two-hundred-twelve hours worked for twenty-eight-day work period. Hours worked in excess of two-hundred-twelve hours per twenty-eight-day work period shall be compensated at one and a half times the employee's regular hourly rate as defined in the Fair Labor Standards Act. So, I'm sure that's clear as mud. We have been able to work and come up with that, that any, um, we... The schedules he has, they'll mainly be working two-hundred-forty hours in a, in a month, in the twenty-eight cycles.
Uh, it'll be two-hundred-and-eighteen or two-hundred-and...
Forty.
Forty, yeah.
Two forty, I believe. Yeah, somewhere. So, that, number two, takes care of that, uh, so that we can pay the two twenty-four-hour firefighters. And along with our job descriptions, number one was added as just, this is for, uh, clarification. As we know, Eric Jones does a lot of the records administration for the department. Um, currently, we did, we had removed that records administrator and felt it needed to be back on to clarify that position. So, that's what number one here is under this salary ordinance. And this is time sensitive.
Chief, come forward and kind of explain things as well.
Yes. Uh, as far as that portion of it, uh, if anybody would like any more detail on that, if you've got about an hour and a half, two hours, I can explain to you in detail. Uh, we've dealt with this several times. Uh, I was thanking everybody earlier, Josh, Jan, Jill, Emily, everybody's been helping out a ton with it, uh, because it has been a task. If we've contacted probably three different clerk treasurers, six different fire departments, and everybody does it different. Uh, so, we finally got it down to the mid-rating, I think. We're all set to go. Uh, but to fill in just a little bit on the overall, uh, obviously, the new hire was Isaac Hunfield. He's on it. Went, made it through the whole process, scored the highest, so on. Uh, and the board of, Board of Works approved him this morning, uh, to start full-time. Uh, Brad, Deep, and Isaac Hunfield, they'll be doing the twenty-four forty-eight schedule, so basically, two-thirds of the year will have coverage now, twenty-four-seven. Uh, hopefully, it'll be a hundred percent, but that third shift is gonna still be filled by part-timers, uh, so we're at the mercy of them if they can sign up for that shift or not. So, there may be some voids in there where we are still operating a hundred percent volunteer, just because we may not have a part-timer available for that shift. Uh, with that being said, like Jan said, we are keeping Eric on weekdays, as most of you guys know, through our, uh, budget hearing. Um, that's our highest run volume with our lowest amount of volunteers available, just do two work hours, go for our volunteers' work. Uh, so, where we obviously need to keep that day staff stacked up, plus, like she said, he does a lot of training and records course as well, and help out the addicts already. Uh, but overall, we have a policy that we'll be presenting to you guys. Uh, we'll be emailing you a digital copy of this, um, as soon as possible tonight, tomorrow, sometime, so watch for it. It's a hundred-page document that's gonna be a little more, actually, once we're done. Uh, we're gonna be meeting on it next week and doing some final touch-ups, but we do have a rough draft that we'll be sending to you guys. The main portion of it that you're gonna probably need to review, uh, most of it's just legalities, federal stuff, you know, so on. But section four, it covers employee benefits. This is the part, like she mentioned, the city's never had before and or faced before. Uh, so there is gonna be some changes that would have to take place. She told me not to get too detailed with you guys, so I'm gonna throw a little bit at you, but by all means, I'm gonna try not to overwhelm you here. Um, as you guys may or may not know, a standard forty-hour employee works two-thousand-eighty hours a week. Um, a twenty-four forty-eight, yeah, twenty-four-hour firefighter, uh, they'll be working two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-six hours annually. Uh, so that's six-hundred-and-seventy-six, that more hours a year, where a normal employee gets forty hours of vacation. Obviously, that would only be like a day and some change for a firefighter, so that wouldn't be really sufficient for them to even take a vacation. Uh, so we'd have to up that another additional eight hours to cover two full days to get them their full week's vacation. Uh, sixteen hours personal time, uh, for a normal city employee, obviously, that'd have to be bumped up to cover their two full days, so that'd be forty-eight. And where it gets kind of equal is a normal city employee gets a hundred-and-twenty hours holiday pay, which is fifteen holidays. A firefighter would get equivalent to that. It would be five floating holidays. It's still a hundred-and-twenty hours, just like all the rest of the employees. Uh, they would just have five floating holidays to be able to utilize throughout the year. Uh, sick days, don't wanna probably get into too deep into that. Um, however, I will give you brief rundown. We're keeping that exactly the same, because as you guys know, we have the sick bank, we have a lot of other things that just don't wanna, I don't even wanna get into that. We'll... So, we're gonna basically keep that the same, so it's uniform across the city, so there's no issue there. Uh, so basically, the rundown of all, I just rattled off. A standard employee of the city just, works, I'm sorry. They get a total of two-hundred-and-sixteen hours off annually, equalling twenty-seven days. A firefighter, uh, is gonna end up with two-hundred-and-fifty-six hours off annually, but it only equates to ten-point-six days for them, so it's less than half. Uh, the math I figured out was, uh, let's see here. The two-hundred-and-fifty-six hours based off of two, the two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-six hours they work is nine-point-two-eight percent of their overall work time, uh, where a standard employee's two-hundred-and-sixteen hours is ten-point-three-eight percent. So, you know, when you get into the fair fairness, uh, if you actually do the ten-point-eight of a standard employee, it'd be two-hundred-and-eighty-six hours. What we're proposing is two-hundred-and-fifty-six. So, it's actually thirty hours less than what you could classify as fair, I guess. So, just a quick rundown. Uh, if you guys have any questions, I know I'll fill a lot actually really quick right there. Uh, but by all means, you guys know my phone's always on. Uh, you can call me anytime, but we will hopefully be presenting this to you at the next board, or at the next, uh, council meeting. Anything, Jan?
When we can all get through it. We're gonna work with the mayor's office. We have a meeting with them at nine o'clock on Thursday. It's, and I would, could I add to the council that in looking at this and in speaking with Lori, it appears, uh, that it is pretty well what our hand, our, our handbook says. So many of these chapters are what we already have. So, the main difference would be in, like he said, in chapter four, and there would also need to be a section saying that the eight-hour, um, firefighters would be under the same, uh, as what the city is. So, that's, if that's making sense.
Yes. Myself and Eric will remain the same as the rest of the city. It's just gonna be those two twenty-four forty-eight guys, so... And once again, I wanna thank everybody, 'cause, you know, as I walk in the offices and call the phones, they still answer, which really shocks me. When I walk in, they still smile, which really shocks me even more. They're really good at taking it. Appreciate that. Uh, but, like I've said a million times, Jan, I guess, I'm tired of hearing it, but at some point, there's gonna be a fire chief that don't even realize it, or clerk treasurer that don't even realize it, or any other city official. But if they had to deal with this, they would be thankful that we've already done it. And it'd be a lot harder to deal with moving forward in the future, you know, if we continue to grow than what we could just go ahead and deal with it now. I think it's the right thing to do, look for the city and for the departments.
We're trying to do it correctly. We're, you know, the subject.
Chief, you did a great job, and your team behind you, you're doing fantastic, so we're thankful that council has given. Uh, so we now have two people that can interchange on twenty-four-hour shifts. We've got somebody there all night long. So, for most of the year, you'll be using some of your reserves, but the last two, so that's fantastic. So, thank you so very much.
Hey, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Chief.
I, I think because we've got other more discussion to do on this, why don't you do this in the first reading?
No, it's time sensitive.
Yeah, we're, we're missing the draft.
Because he's so...
Well, I guess Jill lists the draft, I think, that's on the Board of Works agenda, that are, I'm sure the Board of Works have the same one.
The handbook is the draft, but the ordinance she needs to go through tonight to be able to pay them.
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, the, the handbook, we're not considering tonight.
Correct.
But the ordinance, we do.
Correct.
Okay, I get it. This is just the salary ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess it's... So, I guess we'll take a motion to accept, uh, to, to go forward on ordinance twenty-two-three-nine, ordinance amending the twenty-two-three salary ordinance. Is there a motion to do so?
Make a motion.
Christian Evans makes a motion. Is there a second?
One second.
All papers second, stat. Uh, any questions, comments? Hearing none, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Uh, now, we would ask for, is there a motion to go forward and, uh, to pass on second?
Suspend the rules. They have second, third reading. I'll make that motion.
Chuck Rose makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Christian Evans, second, stat. Any other questions about that? If not, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. Eric, uh, opposed? None? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Now, we'll accept the motion to go forward and pass twenty-two-three-nine on second and third reading. Is there a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Chris Alpersen makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Christian Evans, second, stat. Any other questions, comments, whatever, before we go? Hearing none, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Passes on all three readings, ordinance twenty-two-three-nine. Thank you very much. Okay, next we have is twenty, ordinance twenty-two-r-eight, confirmatory declaratory resolution doesn't mean economic development revitalization hearing, improving tax abatement. Mr. Josh.
I have an update from Ann Keller from SB one. Um, she was up Friday, and it's, we're seeing some of the progress in the building. Now, Mr. Gibbs has begun an renovation work with the front entry office areas, and now the manufactured fortune. He advised we're still some exchanging the documents with the building owners, and that has to be complete before the SB one will be signed, so... She says he is aware that there will be no abatement until that is, um, finalized and provided to us, so I would ask that it is be tabled tonight.
Motion for top chef.
Make a motion to table.
Christian Evans makes a motion to table. Is there a second? Resolution?
Sorry.
I'll second.
Bill Hovland, second. Uh, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. We're tabling motion twenty-two-two-r to SB eight. We have, uh, the next thing is reappointment of Scottsburg EDC, Monte Craig. Do we have a motion to reappoint Monte Craig to the EDC?
I'll make the motion.
Chuck Rose makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Chris Alpersen, seconds. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Re- reappoint Monte Craig to EDC. Next is reappointment of Eric Lowery to Scottsburg BZA. Is there any questions or a motion to reappoint Eric Lowery to BZA?
I'll make the motion. Eric did a great job.
Chuck Rose makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Christian Evans, seconds. Questions, comments? Hearing none, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much. The next thing we have is, uh, Jan Hart, presentation two thousand twenty, I'm standing.
Josh. Yes, and in your packet, um, that Jill sent out, you, this will combine H and I, um, because this is a kind of a new stipulation by state board of council that just the clerk treasurer, make the council aware, um, of what we encumbered for the departments. So, that's where you've got your purchase order. Um, there was like six things there, or, yeah. Six, six different items that were encumbered, um, into two thousand twenty-three. And the outstanding checks, the, uh, list that you have of those, those are just checks that had not been cashed yet, and state board of council also requires that after two years, those warrants be written back in to the account that they came from. So, this, I'm just making you aware that these, you have been notified above. So, I would just look the minutes. I don't think we get a motion or anything through Josh, but the minutes reflect that you, these were presented. Any questions or anything on them, or the self-explanatory?
Okay, thank you. Uh, I want to put out a kudos to Jan as well. Jan talked with, spoke with one of our local banks and, and was able to get an interest going from, I think, point nine-two, uh, that's, you know, uh, up to, I think, almost four percent, four point one five.
It was the highest when I've gotten votes on, from our three local institutes, four point five. Yes, sir. It's the highest.
So, kudos to Jan on that, so thank you, Jan. Also, in announcements, uh, this, let me, let me tell you about EMPA. EMPA is building more, uh, solar parks. They're wanting all sixty-three members to sign. There are three that have not signed. Anderson had not signed, Scottsburg United signed, and Levitt had not signed. And Anderson just recently did sign. And, uh, one of the reasons that I had held back was that I'm trying to be able to have some type of a solar park for ourselves here, that we could, once that's jet, it's paid off, it has a fifty-year life capacity, it loses a half percent a year. So, in twenty years, we've lost ten, and we can still have ninety percent production for the next forty, you know, thirty years. So, but they're not very much. They're not much. And then on top of that, a charge of this twenty-six thousand dollars a month, or what? It's twenty-six thousand a change for not being funded. So, uh, I won't be coming before you to say, if anybody's got a reason to not sign, I think at this point, it's, it's... it's, I'm prepared to go forward and sign the city. Sign the city means we are in a, we are in a deal now that we, that our, our... What we're signing for is up to 42. This is taken up to 2050. So, it's an eight-year extension on our commitment to it. So, if anybody sees a problem with that, please let me know. Everybody's okay, I'm gonna go ahead and sign for that, okay? Okay. Christian, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, so I just, I felt compelled tonight to address something publicly that has made its rounds in other public meetings, and I'm gonna be very careful about what I say to the extent that I say it, but there's a letter on half the regional sewer district that made its rounds that, from the city's perspective, I think many know, there's pending litigation, ongoing litigation between both parties. And I felt compelled to say something tonight as far as, not our position, but I guess I can speak on my court only. I don't feel that that is necessarily accurate in its depiction. I feel at this point in time that the city has made plenty of good faith efforts to help in regard to the growth of the city. I want to make one thing very clear. Our only goal, from the city of Scottsburg's perspective, is to sustain growth in the territories that we can. And when I say sustain growth, I don't foresee sustainability coming in the terms of asking the county for almost $700,000 in ARPA funds. We are more than willing and ready to service the total concept of the station. At the time that this would, had come up, it was in the regional sewer territory, and there was their jurisdiction, so that's ultimately why we invited by that and allowed them to service that. So, again, when I talk about sustainable growth, I want to be very clear that if we're going to sustain growth, I don't think it can be on the back of the rate payers. I know the city maintains, and I'm using rough numbers, around 300, 350 users that are city residents but on the regional sewer district service. The rate, and which is depicted in the letter, that we were supposed to raise our rate with two increment back in 2018, and we did not, because we had some savings on the estimated wastewater treatment plant, which we successfully managed that. So, we did not raise a second rate, and they went ahead and have raised that rate. I'm not gonna get into how much difference it is, but it is substantial. It is a substantial difference. And again, on the theme of sustainability, if we're gonna grow west of town, which seems to be the theme everywhere, we have to start asking ourselves, what does that look like? Who is going to come to the city or the county west of town and grow with the current rates that are being offered? And to pay another $700,000 and potentially not get the funds from ARPA and then have that be basically asked for the rate payers, that's substantial. And not substantial in a good way. So, again, there's no sense in fighting. There's obviously litigation. I'm speaking for myself, but I think I can speak for a lot up here. We're ready and willing to help in any way that we can. I'm sure there's some misinterpretation along the way, but nonetheless, I think we all have to keep in mind that growth is number one priority, and it has to be sustainable. And if we continue to ask the rate payers that are city residents, that are being serviced by the regional sewer district, I am fearful for the future of Scottsburg and our growth capability if that's continuing to be the response, is just high rates and high rates and high rates. So, I just felt compelled tonight, again, you don't have to talk about it, but after reading that letter, I just, I think there's a lot of misinformation that needs to be clarified, so that's my piece.
Thank you. To add to that, I mean, you know, the Scottsburg did have another rate that was gonna take into effect in December of 2019, and it would have gone to 1470, I believe it was, something about $14 or something. But we, in changing that design, we were able to save money, and so we didn't have that. And that, that was, that was also told, we didn't, so we're not taking that third rate hike.
No, I think the, the decision not to implement the scheduled rate hike in looking back, I think, about because of the grant that was applied for. I mean, we had changed the design and plan at that point. It, there was the, Jan helped make $3 million-plus grant that we were eligible for at that time. That was before the change of administration. Yeah, and that's why we decided not to implement that second scheduled rate increase, because with the, with the hope of getting that grant, not needed, but, you know, since that time, the design of the plant changed.
Like that was a little, like it's strong.
Even prior to the last election, we had, the council had decided not to, to implement that second rate increase.
That's accurate.
Right, okay.
Right now, those rates are about 70% of what a Scottsburg resident should pay. So, it's sizable, and so, thank you very much. Is there anything else for this evening? I have an announcement. On March 21st, I don't have the drum roll for this, but on March 21st, and between 11:30 and 2:30, we're going to have a wastewater treatment plant, a ribbon curtain, an open house, tours, and we hope that everyone can attend if at all possible.
That's what the interior said.
It's March 21st, 11:30, we're gonna have sandwiches, we're gonna have cake, we're gonna have, we're gonna have, you know, coffee and tours. We are so excited, you know, about this, and we were able to repurpose everything that old plan had, all paid for, so we were able to repurpose that, we're able to reuse it. So, come out, take a tour, grab a sandwich, get your picture taken, and, but the entire community is welcome. We're opening doors. We want to see everybody. We're gonna call the radio stations and TV stations, we're gonna have folks come up here, so, so it's been fantastic. We were contacted, I think, in May of '22, we were off the van. They sent us the big certificate. We got that in about a month later, so we'll be hanging that certificate up and waiting to see everything. You're just, it's really amazing. So, I didn't quite have the drum roll down, but, but I wanted to make sure everybody was knowledgeable and be there for the ribbon curtain. Again, March 21st, this coming month, at 11:30 to 2:30, at the wastewater treatment plant. Turn down north of 33rd Street, you'll end up right there, so. Okay, what, what else do we have?
Did we look at the list of 2022 enclosures?
That was, I think, Jan was saying, six of them.
There were just six, okay. Right, Jan, six at the end?
It could be, indeed, okay. The six enclosures.
Number six.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I get you.
Was anything else?
Well, I went into the outstanding chairs. Nothing.
Mr. President, what do you have, your force?
I have nothing. I appreciate your putting up with me on the phone.
Well, it's always a joy, my brother. It's always a joy, and, you know, so, anybody else have anything?
Come watch Scottsburg Win Section this week.
And that's, that's Wednesday night?
Wednesday, but Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday in Charlestown.
In Charlestown, at what time is it?
We play Wednesday at 6:00, first game on Wednesday.
Okay, folks, come on out to Charlestown, 6 o'clock. We'll see there with the bagpipe.
And if you win, you may play the second game on Friday?
Friday, yep.
When you win, you do that?
That's right.
So...
Saturday night championship.
There we go, there we go.
Long week.
Go Warriors.
That's right.
Go Warriors, and...
No, we have fish fry at St. Mike's. Catch in on Friday night.
J.R.'s host.
J.R., yeah. J.R. can add something there. He's already gotten a break. As always, he's pulling for the Warriors.
He's one of our best supporters, for sure. Do we have a motion to adjourn it?
I'll make a motion.
We're adjourned.